It is 6:30. I'm going to officially call the meeting of the Charter Revision Commission to order. So we'll call, starting with Trav.
Trav Harmon, yep.
Virginia Sampey.
June Gagnon.
Dan Reel.
Lynn Strachan.
And we have a quorum. Is there a motion on the floor to accept the minutes from the last meeting that we had on February 11th? So moved, is there a second?
A second.
All right, all in favor of accepting those minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. Not opposed, and I'm noting that we have a quorum, so we are ready to proceed. This is the first hearing of the Charter Revision Commission, and the way we're gonna do this is we'll start with a comment from, you know, the public as to suggestions to change, improve, revise the charter. And I would ask the members of the commission, I mean, you know, if you have questions about a certain idea or proposal, like, don't, you know, be afraid to ask, but keep it restricted to that, and then we'll go by individual commission members, and, you know, then we'll wrap it up. So with that said, is there a member of the public or members that want to comment or suggest ideas? One more time.
Me, yeah.
Yeah.
I agree, this, I agree, this is our Democratic registrar, both of us. We, we would like to, we've been talking about back and forth for a long time about consolidation of polling places because of the cost involvement in this, in the court, in the, in the elections itself. It's not like years ago when we had the old lever machines. It was a simply, lever machines didn't need so much maintenance. I mean, they, it was maintained on a regular basis, oiled and everything, and they, everything worked fine. But with these, these machines, we have to buy ink cartridges, do memory cards, we have to pay a maintenance fee yearly for all the machines, which is probably about, I think, like $2,200. So there's a lot of cost involvement, not to mention the poll workers and, and the tape, the paper in the machines, there's a lot of things involved.
Is that $2,200 a machine or all of them?
Twenty-two for all of them, for all the maintenance. But if you had to replace one part on one of those machines, it could cost more than $2,000. So it saves the town a lot of money, and we, and we have those serviced every year.
And how mu- how much does it cost per polling station usually?
For polling stations?
Yes, per.
Polling station. Per polling station. Well, it all depends on how many workers we have there.
Okay.
You know, but you have to have a certain number of poll workers there, no matter what. You know, the only place where we can, when we can save and cut back is on the local municipal elections. But on a federal election, you're supposed to have some, you're supposed to have the moderators, assistant moderators, you know, checkers, and, you know, everybody that's, that's there. You know, we sometimes are still operating when some people are doing double duty.
And which polling stations would you need voting?
Do you have numbers as to how many voters that each?
Like Musa?
Each district has?
Yeah, that I can give you. Plainfield has 4,156 voters. Central Village has 1,187 voters. Musa has 3,267 voters. War Regan has 951.
In the past, what's been like the biggest complaint about not consolidating?
People just didn't want it, they don't wanna lose their districts, which I understand. But the problem is, is not, it's, we have to think about the costs. And what's, well, I can use Woodstock as an example, they're about the same size as we are, and they have one polling place.
One polling place?
One polling place. And they vote in the town hall.
At the school, they do it at a school or something?
No, they do it right in the town hall in Woodstock.
We have to have two, right?
No, necessarily.
Oh, we have to.
But here, here we have, in this, in Plainfield, we have two representative districts. That's why we have the separation. Which is another thing, you have to have, you know, a set of checkers for the 44th, you know, a set of checkers for the 45th.
And on those numbers you gave us, are those active voters or does that include inactive voters?
These are active voters.
Okay.
But to get them all here to vote is, is, it's another trip, Dan.
Right, right.
You know.
That, that, it is, and some people may necessarily say, I'm not sure that I want them all to show up, but, you know, you never know, they might all be so inclined. So how much would it save if we just had, say, everyone came here?
If everyone came here, it would save quite a bit of money, a lot of money.
Well, that being said, what are we spending now, what do you expect?
Well, for salaries alone, we spent at least seven, at least $7,000 for the salary in all these four polling places.
A piece?
No, for the.
Indiana.
Election day, for the election day.
And if we said, you were changing the charter, and we said it's just one polling place, wherever that is, how much would the salaries go down by?
Oh, less than half of that, I would think.
Thirty-five hundred, conservative?
Probably, yeah.
How about if we just kept two?
If we kept two, right, and Musa. Plainfield and Musa, I think, would probably be, be the most likely thing to start.
To start with, because you don't wanna start with one place.
Right.
And discourage anybody.
And I think it would be easier if you were to, like, bring War Regan, which has 951 voters, over to Musa. Because the most that you ever get usually is a couple, you're lucky to get a couple hundred voters on November election, and then for a municipal election, you don't even get, you just about, you don't even get 100. For municipal, I mean, for, I should say, for budget. Budget.
So you think War Regan would be better suited to go to Musa instead of Central Village, which is like right there for?
War Regan would probably be better, than Musa, and Central Village coming here. I think it would be easier to absorb it, right, Musa coming here?
I agree, I think the logistics of it kind of bear out there, War Regan close enough to Musa works out, same thing with Central Village, close enough to the town hall, and Plainfield would work out, and to, to go from four to one might be a little difficult for people to really grasp and understand. And again, back to your initial comment of, why do we, why do we do this? We've had some changes with the state of Connecticut in the way they do their, their machines, so the costs are fixed, and they're multiplied type floor, because that's what you're looking at for, for villages, but if you bring it down to two, it's more reasonable. You can't just jump it to one, it's, it's, they like their village mentality, but I think this is a softer way to, to bring it down to a manageable number. And maybe later on in life, we can talk about having a polling place, might be a little more understandable to the residents when they look at the budget and see the numbers.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm just kinda wondering, because I, I don't know this, you know, but Woodstock, how far does everybody have to drive about? I mean, I, I don't know, to kind of figure, I'd throw it out.
I think they, I think they have a bigger area.
They have a spread out of town.
Yeah. Are you talking east Woodstock, west Woodstock?
Oh, yeah, no, Woodstock is, it's big, I mean, about, it's, it's like Texas big. And in northeastern Connecticut, sort of, right? So how many people does Woodstock have by population, is it like half of what we have?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, because I would imagine there's, there's a lot less people in Woodstock, I, I just wasn't sure offhand how much that was.
I'm not really sure.
Quick Google, 21 square, 61 square miles for Woodstock, Connecticut, Plainfield is 43.
Right, square miles.
So we are truthful.
Do they have a population on there?
It's crazy.
He's Googling.
Seven, eight hundred.
Seven, eight hundred, okay, so we, we have double the population.
So by dropping it to two, we were coming more efficient. 15,000, I think, literally. And then some.
What's the lines like? As a voter, standing in line, what would that be like if we put everybody down here, everybody came down here? Or, or two places?
I don't think the lines would be that bad. It doesn't seem like War Regan, it would also be a big, big change.
I know essentially, you walk in and you hope.
Yeah, right, right.
Well, theoretically, mathematically actually, Woodstock, one polling location, seven, eight hundred people, two polling locations, 15,000, we're still within a few single-digit percentage points of Woodstock, so theoretically, I don't see a problem with it. And being it's the first year, I mean, it's not that, I don't see a doubt.
And nothing would happen now in this race anyway till after the November election.
Right, Kevin, you have your head up.
I have a question, how many machines are currently utilized between the four polling places?
We use 10 machines.
And if you're?
Because we have two districts here.
All right, if you curve it back to utilizing less, like, less of War Regan, less of Central Village, you.
It would be six machines.
Okay, so there is some savings directly related to machines.
Directly related to the machines and the programming of the memory cards, because we also have to program the memory cards.
Okay, so there's a fixed savings, we can calculate that out for you.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, I'm, I'm wondering, I, I could be wrong, but my recollection is, and this is why I'm asking, is I believe we have two state rep districts and two senate districts in our town, is that true for the entire town?
Not two senate, just two state representatives.
Just two state representative districts? But one state senate?
Well, one state senate.
Yeah, because I know the districts in the north, it's weird, it's gerrymandered in this.
Oh, Killenley's really messed up.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you were the captain of understudy on that one.
Yeah, they, they really have a lot, but they, and they went down to, they used to have like five or six, five or six polling districts, now they've gone down to three, I believe.
Yeah, and it's, Musa is in a different state rep district than Plainfield.
Well, Plainfield has two state representative districts, as it is, we have 44th and 45th, and then the rest of the town is all 44th.
Yeah, so I mean, I, I was just kind of thinking, it might be a convenient way to do it that way, but it looks like we kind of can't. Because I know some, part of the problem, you know, I mean, that kind of comes up, is you have, depending on how the cards are programmed, because I remember like the tape was just weird, because I think there was a.
Oh, that was a mess, oh, that was bad.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, so I just kind of figured, maybe while we're fixing this problem, we can hopefully find a way to fix that bit, you know, I mean, it's, that's something to think about. Is there any further questions from that?
Two questions.
Yes.
She mentioned the lines, but what about the workers? Is this gonna overtax the workers with two, or would you have to put extra workers on the polls?
I don't really see the need for that anymore, you know, I mean, I.
And my other question was?
Would we save on some of the workers? Yeah, you know.
No, I'm not saying saving our workers, I'm talking about overtaxing the workers here and in Musa. They're gonna, they're gonna take more voters per day.
Yeah.
That's all I was asking.
Would probably have to stick, stick an ex, you know, a couple of check people, check checkers, if we had, if we had to do that, but, but I don't, I wouldn't, it wouldn't be that much more.
And my other question was what item number out of the charter, what chapter, verse was it?
Which, that's, we're talking about economists versus?
You don't know.
Three, four.
Three, four?
Yep, chapter three, four, yep.
Okay.
Okay, just for the record here.
And it's very generic on that, what it says on three, four. So you wanted to change much in there, but it would be something that had to be voted on in the Charter Revision, I think it's three, four.
Okay.
It's very generic.
Yeah, it, and, and this is just my reading of it, and it doesn't specifically call for polling places to be anywhere. So this, this, this may be, I mean, it's page six. Section three, four says, "Voting districts and polling places within a town may be established, consolidated, divided, and/or re-divided, in the manner provided by the general statutes," so.
So technically, what's done?
The section, what's general statute said?
Is, this, the question raised is, do we already have an answer on that, and is it in the authority of this group?
No.
It could be an advisory question from the selectmen at any time.
Well, it can be reestablished, so then does, does this group have the authority to give you that?
It sounds like you'd have the authority.
Yeah, and we have to, is this a?
The problem may be solved.
Yeah, is this a red hammer, or is it, the question was raised, but it would be the appropriate.
I could review the whole thing again, be sure if there's nothing else there, but three, four might be the only place.
Yeah, I know, the question, I mean, it's, it's something to ponder, and that's why we're having this hearing, is to just get it out, and, you know, kick the tires of this idea and see if it drives.
Well, I think it was that, that, that new verbiage, I think, from the last Charter revision.
Yeah.
But I don't think anybody wanted to make any actions or do anything prior to this.
Yeah, I think it would be interesting if we went back and checked what the logic was from the last Charter revision, that might inform, you know, here's why they did it.
General statutes.
Statute of it.
I'm pretty okay.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's not a problem. All right, so you had a question?
Well, the, the general statutes, if that's the case, then, you know, where does the authority, is it conveyed to in the general statute? Is it to the selectmen in town, or is it to the Charter Revision Committee, or some authority? As far as I'm reading, what you requested is already legal, I, I'm not the lawyer, but.
I mean, neither am I, but I, I do know the mechanics of that are in Title IX, you know, I mean, they have different chapters that deal with getting on the ballot, polling places, how votes are tabulated, so, I mean, it kind of seems like it's, it's something to think about, you know, we, we may decide, let's recommend consolidating the polling places and fixing the polling places of the Charter, or that may be entirely unnecessary. All right, is there any more? Oh, not at all, I mean, it's, it's, I think it's a good idea that has merit in, in exploring. So is there any additional public comment on proposed ideas, changes, revisions? Yes?
Do you guys have a copy of what got corrected last time, what got changed in the Charter?
I'm sure we could get it, I mean, we could compare the older version.
Seems like that might be a good way to start, too, and also look at some of the questions that didn't get put on, they probably have a list.
If you wanted to go back and take a look at the last three, that way you can get a flavor of what's been going on over the last, you know, 10, 15 years of.
Might help.
Yeah, and is there like a commentary of the ghost with it, is there some sort of record that says, here is why they did it, or?
An invitation?
It's something like that, because I know going forward, that was one of the things we discussed at the first meeting, was a pending to the Charter, like a basic, not verbose explanation, but just kind of a, here's what we did and here's why we did it, you know, so that way if people have a question, or they go, it comes to court, they can be like, hey, we, we know why they did it.
I have a paper, it says draft report of the 2018 Charter Revision Commission. They're all on the videos, you've watched all the meetings, and they're discussed and explained at any times.
Yeah, so we're.
It must have been minutes, too, right?
They're.
No, not necessarily in the minutes, I don't know.
The issue with the minutes are that you have a brief, one or two line description versus a video, which you can go back and.
Yeah, because, because what we're looking to tackle here is the problem of what you would call legislative intent, as it were. You know, because if a portion of the Charter does go to court for some reason, there have been instances where, you know, people have had interpretations of their own, right or wrong. It'd also be great to have that counter, so we're gonna have to go back and review the last meetings. Is there any other public comments on suggestions or changes that we should take up? One more time, twice, none. All right, Trav, I know you had a few ideas of your own that didn't come up at the last meeting, and what would those be?
Well, revising, I'm sorry, rehashing, 2.5B, Mr. Cunningham had brought up the raising of the monies from, and I believe he said 1984 was when it was defined, correct?
Initial charter.
Yes, yes, so doing, and luckily, 2.5% per year gain, if real simple, you can find every calculator on Google on this, at $10,000 would be about $25,000 today. $50,000 would equal 125K today, so I don't know if we should put on the agenda to verify those numbers and/or then move on from that subject, because there was a request, I don't see a problem with that, because math is math, economies move on. So that's the case, so you just double verify the numbers and, and move on from there.
Yeah, I mean, that seems logical, I mean, my thought, I mean, again, I mean, I can't, you know, I'm not the entire commission, that's, this may be what we ultimately decide or don't. I would kind of think that 2.5% might want to be higher, or we could index it to something like, you know.
High to the index.
Yeah, to the Bureau of Labor Statistics.
Like, if you have an auto-adjust, something like that.
Yeah, because I, I know there's, there's a lot of agencies, a lot of government entities, that they index it all to, you know, different federal entities that collect data, and quite frankly, they're, they're better at it than we are, so, I mean, it's not, broke, don't fix it, right?
Well, I kind of like what Trav found out, he found out it would be 25,000.
25K for the 10,000 in the Charter, and it'd be 1.5 to the 50,000.
Yeah, because I, I just know one of my, one of the issues I always have with this, when people start talking, you know, actual inflation, or like actual, I mean, let's face it, sometimes the data, the federal government will monkey it a little bit, so we have to be a little more realistic, I mean, it could be, you know, rather than 25K, I mean, we might want to theoretically go higher, you know, I mean, just to be efficient, or we might want to go lower, so.
We'll just tie it.
Yeah, we're just tied.
Well, it does need to be changed, because we have to go to a town meeting and vote for a vehicle that was purchased from the police department. And, 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 because it was.
I don't think you can find a vehicle for a town.
Or a good reliable one, anyway.
For the police.
Right, 1984 here, right? It was originally. So that makes sense, yeah.
Yeah. Because somebody used to be a quarter, like, you know, now, I just, time flies when inflation cranks up. So did you have any other proposals or ideas?
Well, one of them was is that to change the minimum quorum of 25 users to just the majority of people, or change it to a little, a little more, because I've experienced this, where you go up there, and we're one person short.
Right.
And I am a person to move along, as much as we would like to force an issue through, the thing is, this is a, what was the delay of one, two, three weeks, where we may be in the exact same position, was just the majority of voters, and we changed the threshold from 25 to 15, or to 10, or something like that, but just, the, the, three people show up, two vote yay, one vote nay, hey, get passes. It's the citizens' duty to show up, that's how I believe it.
We gotta inform people what's going on, because last time, we did have a quorum of more than 25 people, because a lot of people now knew what was going on and that they were needed for the vote, so I think we can do it, it pushes people, it pushes us to get people there, and more people know what's going on.
But is that, is the marketing outside of purview of the authority of this group?
The what?
The, the authority of this group, is, I think it's marketing in the town, informing people.
Sure.
Yeah, I, I, I think the marketing would be, but, I mean, I'm thinking the quorum issue is an issue, because I remember the last town meeting we had, it was something that everybody agreed on, it was common sense, and something.
Well, you missed it by one.
Yeah.
That one time, but then a bunch of people came that time.
Yeah, but is that efficient?
I think it was great. For one thing, this question was on the ballot last time, and it was shot down by vote, so I still think we need more people, three people can't decide, it's about 300,000 per, a vehicle or something, you know.
Yeah, but to play devil's advocate, or can they?
Well, if, if we change it, they could.
Yeah, absolutely, you know.
I don't know if that's why, but.
Yeah, because three is obviously, in the, possibly silly, but.
But not outside of the range of possibility, especially if it's a town day or something like that.
My concern is, if you get to that number of five, three, whatever it might be, is that you're really asking for those individuals to vote for a certain, now, let's say you're raising it to 125, you're now asking those individuals to give you the answer to a very large number. I believe that keeping it at 25 is really the onus of the town to inform the public. We've changed processes now, where we have Nixle available, and we used it last time, and we got, I think it was 40 people that showed up. And that was the first two days we had Nixle up. I would ask for consideration under that, that we do a better job of advertising and, and marketing.
But I, I think, I don't think it was Nixle yet, I think it was Facebook. But in the future.
Yeah, absolutely, ways.
Yeah, there, there is social media now, I mean, that, that is something that is different, communications are faster, that is something that is different. On the other hand, you would also see, but if we're changing the dollar thresholds, that would also make it different, like, I think if there was, if it was only like 10 grand, you know, who's gonna care, 10 grand is dropping a bucket to most people, you know, I mean, in, in the big.
To the town, to individuals, that's something else.
But I'm just saying, like, it's, you know, I mean, people, you know, I mean, we should all make a big deal about how all money is spent, but, you know, I think if the dollar threshold were higher, that would probably compel people to come out more, so that might not be a core issue.
Shout the idea.
Right, I mean, you know, it's, it's, that's what this hearing's for, is to get the idea down, so we could, you know, start hashing that later on. So with that said, do you have any additional?
I'm good.
You're good, you didn't have like a new commission idea?
I did, I can't remember.
I just want to raise a, a kind of wild, I don't know, it's not a wild question, but considering changing our form of government to a, I don't know if you'd necessarily call it a town council, but adding the, to the number of selectmen and having a town.
Yeah, that was, I honestly, that was something I was on board with, too, because it, you know, and, and this could tie into the polling place locations, because theoretically, one possible way you could do it, I mean, although we would, you know, have to have, I think, more polling places, or maybe not, you know, we could say each borough gets its own seat on the Board of Selectmen, isn't that large, and everybody in the entire town votes for first selectman, that could be one way to do it. But, you know, I think the other side of that is War Regan would be disproportionately highly represented, you know, because there are so few people in War Regan compared to the other boroughs.
I guess I'm not, I wasn't thinking so much about the voting of it, which is important.
Yeah.
But, you know, just about the, you know, the complexities of running a town now.
Yeah.
And the advantage sometimes to having someone who's particularly, you know, who's trained for that, and, but to keep the, to keep the local people involved and invested, to have, you know, to have them as like a town council, or to increase the Board of Select, uh, Selectmen to, you know, 10 or whatever.
Yeah, I agree on that, I mean, and, and I'm just gonna, just some practical experience in, in running a state political party, like, sometimes we'll have a state central meeting, I'm like, guys, y'all can't agree, like, what are we missing? You know, there's, I'm like, you know, please, someone, you know, we've gotta be missing something, but I think when you get a smaller group of people, you know, it, it, it doesn't really capitalize on what, what's been called the miracle of large numbers, which generally tends to make really horrible ideas, you know, not actualized so easily.
Well, depending back on what you said, if you increase the, the select people from three to five, so basically have four major groups, each select person would represent that, and the first selectman would unify them all together.
Right.
That would be, that would, that would be perfect, because then each borough would have a representative that focuses on that individual geographic area, and then we have a unified voice at the first selectman, and then we could do it that way.
I think that, but that still doesn't really address my issue with the town manager.
Yeah.
I see, there might be a lot to talk about.
Oh, no, no, I, I think, I think we're small enough where we could facilitate that, yeah, sure.
Okay, what about, like, she just said, a town manager with a council, we don't necessarily have to pay for our council coming from our district.
Right.
And we could still have the district, but, I don't know, what do they call them, presidents of the council, or whatever they call. Presidents of the council or whatever they call them, whatever the name they want to give them and then do it that way. I mean, that's just a, an idea, it's just a throw up.
Well, I just want to say that since 1984, or even before that, I don't know when this, um, this was written in 1984 for three selectmen. And it has worked that way ever since. It's never, it's been, it's been an efficient government for the size of town we have. And it, I believe too many crooks spoil the broth. If you have too many people, now this, I'm not saying the town shouldn't be involved in government. I'm saying that you need three people to manage a lot of stuff. There's a lot of things going on and it opens it up for more people to come and be involved. You get, but you have to have three people voting on things. It's, if you extend it too much, you're going to have a lot of confusion. And I have read up on this. I know that a lot of towns in the Southwoods, it went to five, would like to go back to three. It just creates a lot of confusion. Then you've got a lot of money, you have stipends that you have to pay. So it's going to change a lot of things, not just the type of government.
Absolutely.
But there's a lot involved.
And there's a lot of towns around here that are running that way. Killingly's running that way.
It's a different story.
Running that way. But it's something to maybe form a committee and go up to Killingly, go up to Plano.
Yeah, I mean, ask them what their problems are. Yeah, Kevin, Kevin.
Can I ask what the intent would be to go to a town manager position?
Uh, intent is that it, it's becoming more and more, uh, the day to day and the dealings with every, the state and, and all of that is becoming more and more involved.
Yeah.
And the need for someone who has studied and, you know, has, has made that their, their career, I think is, is valuable. But I think it's valuable to have a, I guess I'm not so.
Well, it's works. Actually, just, just before we, just before we get too far afield, I believe the initial question that we were kind of looking at was the number of selectmen, but it kind of bled into the town manager. I think we should go back and, and finish, you know, the discussion on the number of selectmen. So, um, as far as that goes, um, is there any more input on that? Yes?
Yeah, I don't see a need. If you, if you go from three to five, you're still gonna have a majority, you're gonna be paying two more. And those two extra people, if those two extra people are gonna be coming from the audience anyway, that participate, somebody like, you know, maybe Scott or, so you're just gonna bring them onto a board and pay them instead to discuss what you're gonna discuss anyway. I don't think it's gonna make a big difference.
I don't think you have to pay them.
You have to pay them. Are you gonna pay two or are you gonna not pay?
No, no, but if you have a town manager.
If you got, right, if you got.
Which would be a separate question.
Wait, we're getting off the town manager for now. Dan said we're talking about the five selectmen, okay? To do that, you're gonna have to pay more. You're gonna have to pay all four of those selectmen because they're not gonna volunteer. They're just not gonna do it. You can't even get 25 people for a quorum. So you're not gonna get people to do this. And the same, and same thing with the town manager, you're gonna pay a town manager, ooh, close to double what you're gonna pay this guy.
Right, but let's, let's, let's finish the number select.
And you, and you're still gonna have to have a city council, and you're gonna pay every member, same thing. Cause they're not gonna volunteer to do it, Virginia.
Generally pays all of their councils.
Sure. They won't do it for free.
Do you, uh, do you know what they make it killingly?
The economic system now.
Most of what we're paying for second and third selectmen now, but everyone can get a site.
Okay, so, so the market rate is about six grand.
Do you see the economics of those towns compared to our town?
I can research.
Yeah, they have a lot more going for.
Well, they just do.
And retail and, I mean, we're stuck here between Lisbon and Killingly and we're getting nothing in here.
Well, ours is.
All right, wait, we think we're all getting off on the big path here. I mean, right, it, it kind of is, but I want to, you know, keep this, you know, so it's on track. I mean, as far as, as far as the number of selectmen, um, is there any additional comments on, you know, why we sure shouldn't do that?
How many years have we been on? Three selectmen. I can see before, I, I know that far.
Probably forever.
Forever, right, from the time they first started. Maybe it's seven, three.
You don't think so?
Right.
No, I was, I wasn't, I wasn't so concerned about the number of selectmen. I wouldn't buy the state at three. I was concerned about having, you know.
All right, so I, I think with that said, um, the idea of a town manager, okay. What are your thoughts on that? Why, why should we do it? Why shouldn't we do it? That's, would be the next item.
Money. That's a why you shouldn't.
Yeah.
Um, I, I just think things are getting so complex that it, you know, it really is to a town's benefit as we grow larger to have, um, a, a person who's trained in that. A first selectman is not able to do that. I, I think a town. I mean, Paul Sweet did it for what, 20 years? Things have changed. Things were the same, they're, they haven't changed that much.
They haven't.
Art, I'm interested, you've got your hand up very liberally, I think.
Art, I've lived here 30 years, the town has not grown. 30 years, it's still at 15 something. It hasn't grown, so I, I don't.
We have to go to Killingly, we have to go to Lisbon, we have to go.
In, indeed, I think it would be a problem.
To run the town?
No, no, no.
We don't go out of this town?
Economically.
Truthfully.
This is a poor town. Have you read that in the paper yet?
Well, yeah, but that has nothing to do with having him.
Yes.
Okay, Roz then, then we don't want a manager because he's gonna cost twice as much as Kevin.
And probably do twice as much as Kevin.
I doubt it.
Sorry, Kevin.
I see what he does, I doubt it.
I don't know.
If we have a competent.
I think it's about the functionality, I think that's a fair way to put it, you know? So we would have to really think about, you know, I mean, the town not growing, that is a problem, but is there a causal nexus between do we have a town manager not know what? I can tell you from my experience, you know, in the litigation business is sometimes like Norwich is a perfect example of some things they do right, but for the most part, a lot of things just done horribly wrong. You know, there's, there's lack of transparency, there's lack of accountability. I, I mean, I would honestly be surprised if city council Norwich actually ran everything because they have a manager and he, you know, he goes off, he, he does this, that and the other thing. You know, contracts are kind of like, you know, steered handed out by him. And it just kind of seems like the voters, the, the, the connection between the board of selectmen and the voters is, is direct. The board of selectmen is effectively in charge. But with a town manager, you're, you're adding like a layer between like, you know, everybody else. There's, I mean, my thought is there's just less ability to actually self govern. Yeah, so.
I will agree with your position because in IT, managed IT and stuff like this, just in business in general, you hire a director of operations. They handle the day to day monotonous, monotone, consistent things that, no offense to Kevin, you shouldn't be doing. You shouldn't have to be arguing with contracts, which is a, um, a thing. Just let the manager manage. The captain or the first selectman steers the ship. The crew cleans and swaps the deck and the manager keeps the crew in line, like a first officer or an executive officer. I have no problem with that. And basically, the first selectman would then help promote the town, deal with individual things, and then the manager would implement that. Because there comes a point, and I've experienced it pretty much every other day in my business, there's just too much on my plate and somebody needs to else do it, even, even if it's a monotonous system, it needs to get done. Paper needs to be filed, HR, things like that, that no matter what day, it could be in 1970s, it could be the 2050s, it doesn't matter. The paper needs to be done. But what's the vision in the town? That's what I believe the first selectmen should be able to, it, to, to do that. Then delegate out that function to other people. So yes, a manager in a business sense or director of operations or, or, uh, HR manager, whatever scenario or word you want to call it, they implement the vision by, from the upper echelons of the government down. And then they concentrate on greater things such as we need to do this and this and this. Does Kevin need to be involved with the absolute details of the permitting? No. Let the manager deal with it. We, we need to have this event today, it's gonna make great sense for the town, everyone's gonna love it, you figure it out. And that's how I look at it.
Right, like we, we don't want, you know, poor Kevin mopping floors. I mean, that's, that's just patently, come on, I mean, it's.
But somebody's gotta do it.
Right, someone's gotta do it, but it's below his pay grade.
So I like that idea.
No, it's just that it's an idea.
Yes, yeah, it's, it's an idea to be discussed, uh, Art?
Yeah, can we discuss it? So now, now we want to pay a manager 100 and something thousand? We want to pay a first selectman 70 something thousand?
It, it's, it's a fair point. It's a fair point.
Why would we?
Yeah. Cost versus benefit.
I want to tell you, as far, as far as marketing a town, as far as getting businesses in, into town, if the first selectman had an economic developer, he'd give her, give them the charge to do that. But we don't have that right now.
We do have an economic development commission.
We have a commission. So.
Nope.
What, what's, what's, what's the manager gonna do other?
Yeah, like I, I've been considering.
Other than what a selectman does, first selectman does.
I agree with you is we gotta find out, like, if we're gonna have a town manager, what does he or she do?
He's gonna do everything.
Well, my experience is, you know, that might be a problem. I mean, because, uh, government does need some limitation, like, you know, scope of mission. Because I think as you and I would agree, sometimes mission creep sets in and it starts trying to do this and solve all sorts of problems where quite frankly, it's not the right tool to do it.
I didn't really mean to start all this.
Oh, no, it's, it's a great discussion.
You know what, that's why you're here. Own it, own it, be proud of it. You did ask the question, but to answer it, be proud of that.
So I think that we should generate ideas and then maybe come to gather as a group and.
To, to refine those ideas. Uh, yeah, I mean, we certainly can and.
Before you go off of that subject, can I say something?
Of course.
Okay. What you need to do, in my opinion, would be to look at other towns that have the functionality that you're looking at. And use their examples of what they did right and what they did wrong. And look at the costs.
Replicable examples.
Okay, so that's the idea would be to do that. Because if you're gonna tell me that Killingly is doing it right, I'm gonna tell you right now, no, they're not. You look at what it costs for, or have a town manager and the form of government that they have with their representation that tells the town manager what to do. So you're not getting, eliminating anything from politics. You're having someone guide the town manager into doing what they want that, that person to do, that group to do. So you gotta look at that part of it. Um, if you're gonna use Norwich as an example, totally different form of government. And look at the costs.
Oh, Norwich, yeah.
So it's what you want to do, and again, we are a small town, we are growing. Yes, Virginia, we, we were having a problem with the fact of we have a person who's hired as an economic developer 50% of the time and a town planner 50% of the time. We need to define a role for that person, only one role, and have a separate person doing the other role, like we did before.
Do we still have that person?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
But my concern is at what point in one day does this person do A or B? So we have to really define that so we can get better as a town. And I'm helping do the marketing, believe me, I am. Take a look at the website, you'll see things that are on there right now, which are promoting the businesses in the town. I'm having Kyle change out the economic development page so that there's a list of all of the businesses that we have in town currently running, we want to keep them here. And a second, uh, section of the economic development talking about all the empty buildings. It's showing you everything on a spreadsheet what it looks like and then showing you picture by picture what they're gonna be, you know, what's available. And marketing. So we have some, has to, have to be behind that to help market in different formats. So that's what I'd like to do. Again, in our town, we have to worry about money, always do.
Oh, we, we have to worry a lot about money. And, and just, you know, as some background, I mean, government, the state government and federal government, they're only going to have less money to give us over time. That's the reality, you know, so, I mean, if we open this box, I think we would have to limit it. Uh, Art?
One, one more comment on the manager. If you went, if you decided to go with a manager, you gotta change most of this because it's given board of selectmen authority, not a town manager.
I mean, you know, cause the major question would be what does he or she do? You know, because some people are kind of like, they should market the talent, other people, they should like run specialized affairs, you know, cause you're, you're talking about.
You're talking manager every day to day affairs.
Right, you're, you're talking about such an interdisciplinary thing that maybe being redundant to the board of selectmen, I would tend to agree that it would be. You know, and, and I think at a certain point, at least as far as I, I see things, and I'm not right on everything, but I'm, I'm, I think pretty spot on on this is, you know, it, it does reach the point where it's almost like, why do we elect anybody? You know, cause I know with, with legal stuff, we're just, I let the lawyers decide everything. Why do we have elections? Or like, you know, sometimes in education, when you show a come up like superintendent wants to do A, B, C, and D. It's like, well, why do we even have a board of that? Why don't we just, you know, not even have the positions? Like town managers in some sense would operate like that. So it, it's something to think about and it's worth considering, but you know, if done, we would have to be really careful and do it right.
One thing I'm not hearing in all the times you've been here, what is this town want to be known for? What is our mission statement?
It's a mission, yes.
That's right.
I mean, more specifically, the government, you're, I, I think you're right. It's something we did kind of, uh, briefly touch on at the first meeting was like, you know, there should be, our town government is set up to do A, B, C, and D.
What is the focus? Cause doing 1500 things is great, well, for 1500 people, but the problem is we need to focus on, you know, I understand the town needs businesses.
Is that what our view of this commission?
No. But the thing is, in all the times you're gonna do these events.
Commission's statements change all the time.
Yes. But the other, but the other thing is this, you went and said something that was great was you are having Kyle modify the webpage. As far as I'm concerned, it's market. That could be outsourced to, not outsourced, but town manager. It could be something, it is much, and you can say, listen, I want.
I would, I would change that town website note.
I agree, we'll have a discussion on that later. But yes, I agree. But yes, that, that being said, um, all right, I, I, I agree with Virginia, a town manager, it needs to be explored. Maybe it's a dead issue, maybe it's not.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, I think it's worth a brainstorming session, but I, I also think you're right. Like a statement of purpose, we did kind of touch on it, but, uh, you know, generally what, what a charter does is says our town government, you know, here's what it does and here's how it does it, you know, but I think that would be great. I mean, that would give us focus. I mean, like every, every governing document of every government body has that statement of purpose. And I don't really think we have a clearly defined one in our current version, so we, we ought to think about it. Uh, Art?
I, I agree that you should pursue it because even if it doesn't go into this revision, in the future, as the town grows, it may. We might need a town manager. So then you already did research, so.
Right, and, and a statement of purpose would kind of, you know, tell us like, oh, it, it governs everything else that follows. Like there are people, I happen to be one of them, like I'm not quite sure, you know, government ought necessarily be in the, you know, promote this or that business, but there's some things that are helpful.
I agree with you. The business should not, a government should not be involved in business and the two should not rely on each other. But the thing is this is that one should be able to invite the other. A business should not come into a governmental body toxic. And a government should not be toxic to, to a business body. And, but it comes a point where are we stagnant government? Are we just passive instead of react, are we, are we reactive instead of active and trying to, to, to do that? But that's a.
Right, it's, it's a different, it's, it's a deep philosophical discussion, I think we're gonna have to take up at some point, but you know, it, it's, it's a discussion of its own.
Here's another thought on town manager.
Yes.
We, we elect a first selectman based, based on information we're given and we think that's the best person, we elect them. They come from the town. Town manager, we could hire them from elsewhere based on whatever, just like we did a finance director last year and turned out he wasn't so good. We could end up with that with the town manager and they're in a contract now, you know?
Yeah.
So that's something to think about too.
Oh, no, it don't, no, it definitely is. So with that, um, Trav, did you have any additional suggestions?
Uh, one of them was to get more aggressive on our contract negotiations. I really think that the town, um, I've done this to my vendors and it's been done for me is to, to really start pushing hard on getting, pushing back.
Yeah, is this the charter resolution?
It's not, but that's an idea.
All right, it's, it's an, it's an idea, cause I, I know, I just wanted you to make sure you got that on the record so we could just, you know, put that in the inventory. I'm, I'm sorry, Virginia, I, I inadvertently went back to him, um, so. I'm, I'm sorry, Virginia, I inadvertently went back to him, so.
I apologize.
Did you, um, did you have any other, um, ideas?
Not that I can remember. I think I've got enough time on the.
Okay, okay. I mean, you're.
On the clock here.
All right, uh, June?
Yeah, the Ethics Committee. We had talked about, yeah, originally, um, I looked at it and, I don't know if you looked at it, but Page 11, last.
All right, we will turn our textbooks to page 11.
Yeah, G. We talked about eliminating it. And I was, I was looking at this and I said, it sounds like the Ethics Commission was really formed just to make a code of ethics, which you have back here. There's a code of ethics in here.
Yeah, I gotta, you know, now that we're looking at it, I mean, I gotta tell you, this is, um.
It's almost like it was just, and then they continued it, right? And since nineteen eighty-four, it's said the same thing, the five members for four years. And then in the beginning, in making the initial appointments, three members were appointed for four years, and then two were added, and then they. But it doesn't say why it was to continue going on. It just says that they brought a code of ethics to the town that was voted on by the Board of Selectmen. It sounds like the power winds up still being in the Board of Selectmen.
Right, you know, 'cause the last sentence says, the Ethics Commission shall have other such powers and duties as may be imposed on them by the Board of Selectmen, and.
So now it's become a committee, a commission all to itself, to the point where I believe that some of the stuff that's brought to them is not even presented to the Board of Selectmen anymore.
Plus, it has inherent conflict of interest. Well, let's just say, the Board of Selectmen says, we will give you the power to do X, Y, and Z, and then somebody files a complaint regarding something against all the members of the Board of Selectmen. Now what do they do? Do they, do they have the power to remove all three Board of Selectmen from us? 'Cause my understanding is currently the way we have it, they theoretically could. So I, I don't know, I mean, it, it's, the whole thing, you know, I mean, I think the discussion we had this last time is, it's nebulous. I mean, or what they can and can't do, and there's some limitations in it.
There's no consequences for anything.
Right, and they go, and they've had a historical pension for going horrifically over budget. I mean.
Oh, yeah.
They do want some.
You know, so.
So anyway, yeah, to eliminate that would mean, then you have to go to the state, right? So the state, you know, are, is your code of ethics gonna line up with theirs?
Right.
And, and does that matter?
It should matter, because they have to actually act upon certain items. So you'd have to concur with the state code of ethics to verify that they mesh here. If they're acting on town, I can give them a call and find out what their.
Yeah, that's what I was.
Concerns are between our charter and their own code of ethics.
And that would put somebody outside the realm of possibly knowing each other, too, to make.
Right, like a, like a neutral fact-finder and a neutral process, which I think in a lot of cases, we, we have so desperately needed.
Most of the items in a town charter are actually from state statutes to begin with.
Yeah.
And there's some modifications based on what the town would like to have. Same thing with ordinances. They are taken from certain state statutes and modified. So it doesn't hurt to ask the question from the state Ethics Commission, what their code of conduct are, so I can do that.
Yeah, so let's, let's bifurcate it this way, just to kind of facilitate some discussion. What is the individual sense of the members of this commission for straight-out abolishing the Ethics Committee?
I concur.
You concur?
You have to remember, too, like, um, the code of ethical conduct, which is in here, and you've, you've got the Ethics Commission shall establish guidelines for, for the employment or appointment in a position of financial gain. Okay, that, that's under nepotism, but it does mention the Ethics Commission. So now, if the Ethics Commission is taken out, which is, I think it should be, what do you do there? You have to change that.
There's a written code of ethics that each new employee gets. They have to read through and sign off on.
Yeah, yeah.
So they are understanding what is ethical and what is not based on that documentation.
So you wouldn't change this in here?
Uh, you could follow right in the line with that, I have to check it.
Okay.
Or would you have to change the language to say?
Right, but, but the initial, the initial question we're tossing around is like, what are the thoughts on just completely abolishing it?
Right, I, I can tell.
Yeah, and, and for that reason, I'm assuming, because it's.
Well, it's not needed and, and it's not effective.
It's not effective.
So first one, the first selectman, Mr. Cunningham, if a personnel issue arises, that an ethical issue within a town employee, would it be referred to your office for remediation, or would it be referred to the commission?
You're, you're walking your.
An employee, employee has an ethical problem.
Mm-hmm.
And are you, do you have the power to fire that employee?
Under the, yes, like it was written right now, yes.
I agree, eliminate the commission. It's redundant.
Yeah, so, so in other words, Kevin, just so I can, you know, under, you know, make sure the position's clear for the record that you have, basically, if it's something you would fire them for, it's also something that would be against the code of ethics.
Right.
Okay. That, that makes sense, I would, I would tend to agree. Yeah, I mean, all, all those things, I mean, those are things that if I had an employee and made it him, I would probably fire them for.
As long as it's egregious enough that we can come to that understanding, yeah.
Yeah, and, and you give them an opportunity to have some corrective action, and if they don't correct what it is they're doing wrong, then, yeah, you know, tell them, hey, you're, you're fired. So, uh.
And of course, that depends upon if they're a union or not, and then being able to walk through all the union steps.
Yeah.
We follow all those guidelines.
Yeah, I, I, you know, unions kinda get in the way of the code of ethics in our respect.
That's right. But I'll give an example, just be a wild example. Someone goes to go up and utilize the gas pump at the town garage, and that's a code of ethics where they're violating it because they're stealing something. Um, so we give them the warning, go through the process, and the next step, they did it again. Again, we go to step two, as a, as a, now it's no longer verbal warning, now it's a written warning number one. Third time up, well, it's egregious enough, walk through all the steps with the union. So that would be, you know, following into the code of ethics, a reason why you would say you're terminated.
Yeah. Yeah, no, that makes sense, uh, Lynn, did you?
Um, well, I'd like to see what Kevin comes up with, more information from the state on the.
Just to make sure we have that.
Just to see what.
They have a procedure, right, that you follow.
Yes.
Yeah, and I started to read that, but, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I.
Similar, we do, but there's some differences.
Yeah, I've, I've dealt with even the State Office of Ethics in a past life somewhere, it's, it was that long ago, but, I mean, quite honestly, my experience is they're, they're equally useless and ineffective in a lot of ways. I mean, I, yeah, I left my filter on, sorry guys.
They do have it, they do have it on the.
Yeah, so alternatively, um, I would ask the commission, what is your sense, if we gave the Ethics Committee like teeth and powers to sanction and, and do various other things, like, what would those teeth look like? Starting with Trav? Would you do it, or?
No.
No?
No, it's, 'cause quite simply, here's the problem. If you have people volunteer in the town, are they volunteering because they don't like the person that is being affected? Don't like the person in the government? And if the people outside of the town, do they have any, any skin in the game in the town? Are they affiliated with a construction person? That's the thing that makes me nervous. I, I am not a big purveyor of ethics to begin with. So now we've got a quagmire, we're going down a road that is the opposite of what was brought up. I'm not in favor of giving the Ethics Commission teeth, because it will then become more political, more bogged down, issues be raised. It just will become productive. Fine. Personally, give me a pass. I'm not looking to go down that road, I don't, I don't wanna think about it.
No, it's just, it's, it's a direct, uh, Virginia, what do you, what do you think?
Well, I, I just don't remember that many instances where something got brought to the Board of Selectmen. I mean, I remember a couple, but, um, and the ones I remember, I thought got solved pretty appropriately.
Yeah, so, I mean, you don't, you don't think, I mean, if we kept it, like, we should change, you know, maybe the penalties or the powers they have?
I think to go back and get them, what, to say? Yes, we see.
Right, right. Uh, June?
Well, yeah, what they said, I think it should be eliminated.
Like, I mean.
Like completely the commission.
Right, and in your mind, like, no enhancement of.
Not really needed.
The penalties couldn't help it or remediate it?
It says, it goes back to the Board of Selectmen if there's an issue, pretty much.
Yeah, Lynn?
And it's become, it's become its own entity, it's created itself as a mission.
Do they have regular meetings?
No.
They're not really.
And just, they're on air?
They're there if.
And if an issue comes up, they're.
I thought about not having regular meetings. It's kinda like having to fire a company that doesn't practice, you know?
Yeah.
I, I can, I can answer that one if you want. Before last year, when there were ethic, ethics complaints brought up, they hadn't met since December of seventeen. They hadn't picked.
Oh, two thousand seventeen.
They hadn't picked offices since then, so. It, it was like over two, over two years, they hadn't, you know, or a year and a half.
Yeah.
That's, that's speaks well of the town, though.
That they haven't had to. Or the selectmen are handling it.
Or somehow.
Either, either the Board of Selectmen is handling it like really well and everything is going perfectly according to plan, and everyone's happy and there are no problems, or something is horribly dysfunctional. I, I mean, I, I just know my experiences, the last, the biggest ethics complaint I've heard of involved a former board of ed member, and I was involved in that litigation, and the town spent a ton of money, and the hearings were all blown up and drawn out, and, you know, at the end, it was a horrific amount of money that ended up helping my case in proving the point where the town lost. So we solved it in court, and it was kinda, they were running parallel. And, you know, so I would probably say, I'm divided. I, I would love for the Ethics Committee members or one of them to come to, you know, come to us and say, what do you think? Like, what sort of, you know, I mean, hey, my, my libertarian brains like justify your existence because I always asked that question, you know, I mean, again, my opinion's only one. Then two is, you know, if something, if you, if you wanted more power, like, what power would you need? You know, I mean, make a case. Um, but my sense is, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm more inclined, now that we've had this discussion, I mean, I think prior, I was like, give it more teeth, but I'm thinking, yeah, let's, maybe it's, uh, maybe it's time to go for, for the Ethics Committee.
I think that's a good, you know, an idea to have one of the members or all of the members come.
Yeah, yeah, like, like that movie Office Space, like, so what is it that you do here? So, uh, any other suggestions?
The other one was, we had talked about the passage of the five-year capital. Do we need it, and if so, what reason? And Kelly said that you do need it.
Yes.
For the, um, LoSiP grants, the local capital improvement plans.
If you don't have a plan in place to say that it doesn't like to give you money for your LoSiP, so you have to have something in place as a guideline for them to say, yeah, you do need the money. So I can have her write it up and give it more detail to you, and that'll be fine?
Yeah.
But that leads to the question of, in the charter, it doesn't say it has to fail or pass, so it really needs to have a little bit more of an understanding of what we do with it. 'Cause right now, there is no what-ifs. Same thing, by the way, with the town meeting. We have a town meeting that was scheduled currently for November. If you were to have the town meeting and you present to the public, if it fails, nothing happens. So why do you, why are you actually having them vote on it?
Now just the other section two, three.
Yeah, the first, yeah.
Then it's all that I, section two, three.
Yeah, two, three.
Annual town meeting.
On that one, you can actually just.
February.
Can we talk about that as a change to February as possible? But we really should also talk about, it should be just a reading. You can't change the numbers, the numbers are the numbers. And reports from the, from the departments aren't just that, they are reports. So technically, in my opinion, it should be just a reading. Um, 'cause what are you gonna do if it fails? Go back and write it over again? Because those, again, it's, it's just numbers that are coming from your auditor, and it's reports from each of your departments.
Can, can we guarantee the audit's gonna be in by January?
Well, it's the way you worded it, so you say, look, we'd like to have it in the first week of February pending the completion of the audit.
That's modification two dash three A.
Hmm, two dash three.
Yeah, although, uh, now that we are looking at that, uh, this thing we have, which is called the town audit, whether or not the town meeting approves it or not, I think now that we're looking at it, like, what's the real, right, like, what's the real consequence if the town meeting says, we're not approving it? I would think maybe we might need a new section if we're going to have that, which says, here's what happens. You know, because I, I think in the past, I mean, I've probably voiced this concern a few times, I mean, I don't necessarily trust the results of the audit, you know? I mean, and, and audit's an important function. I mean, it tells you, like, here's where you're wasting money, here's where, you know, things could be done a little tighter, like, here's how your accounts could be managed better. But again, I mean, that also seems to be something that the Board of Selectmen, you know, would be able to take corrective action on, rather than require a town meeting.
What corrective action?
Well, depending on what the audit reveals. I mean, this is hypothetical.
Okay, I can't go back or fix it from before?
True, but going forward, the Board of Selectmen can't say, you know, do things differently.
All right, so we've gotten that information from the auditor, and we'll try to do that going forward. But again, at that moment, when we're doing the reading, it should be clear if we can just say it's a reading versus a passage. And if there is a failure, what do we do if that's the case? 'Cause it's not what you can do, it's just basically the town gives you the final report of what happened in last year's fiscal season.
It's like a treasure is before, right?
Yeah.
You have a little.
Treasure is, treasure is, plus all of your department saying how they did, what things, new things they might have happened.
Wouldn't you like the auditor?
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm just saying, like, you know, I'm, I'm not talking about the petition audit, I'm talking about the actual audit itself, you know? I mean, functionally.
Do you know why it happened? You have to change auditors, because there was a town that was using the same auditor that was literally in bed with the town treasurer, you know, for fifty years.
Literally, not figured.
Fifty-five million dollars over thirty years. And so it's, uh, if not by statute, incredibly good to rotate your audit company. It's like, I think it was the last Board of Finance, and I asked the question of, That's why today is the last Board of Finance, and I asked the question of, you know, how often do we rotate? Just about every three years. So it's not the same audit company for, you know, twenty-five years in a row, it's literally a different one every three years, that has best practices within it, so that's why I quite, I have questions, it's adversarial, but what is the reason for? Because I know the reason why they do it. And so, the same auditor for the last twelve years, four different ones, it's, you know, it doesn't matter if we bring all four back, it's going to be the same result, and even then, are we just questioning the results to question the results?
True, you know, true, I mean, I think for our purposes of the commission, though, I mean, really, it's a, it's a functionality test, it's, you know, so the town meeting says, we reject the audit, now what, you know? And that probably should be a reading, I mean, in my mind, it should be a reading, I think-
Preferably it'll be a reading.
Yeah.
And you tried to get the timing down, that's why I said at the first meeting was, try to get the timing down as best you can?
Yeah.
And I guess the verdict would be, like I said before, would be, we're going to attempt to have it in the first week in February, pending the audit outcome.
Right.
That way you can make an adjustment.
This is on page two, concerned sections two dash three A.
It's just the first two lines of that. You want to change the date, and the second line says, "Board of Selectmen shall determine to accept reports." Instead of "accept," they should read "read reports," instead of "accept."
That would be a quick change.
Right.
It doesn't make an actual, does it mention the audit?
Hmm.
No.
Well, it mentions it. The report from the town auditor, right.
But a definition of the, of what it is, accepting the reports?
From the town officials, including the town-
General statutes would be a sufficient referential index. Kevin?
I'm reading through it again, just to make sure. Well, it's kind of generic, because it's also state statutes. "Such reports shall contain the written narrative reports of the town officers and boards, including those reports required by general statutes, as such matter of the Board of Finance deemed defensible." So the other one giving direction?
Yeah, so, I was just curious, because that seemed to be, you know, I mean, it might have had room for improvement, it doesn't appear to present, so, do you have a problem with the paper? Yes, do we need to take a pause with that, or? Yeah. So, I think the next item, June, you wanted to hit two dash four, the annual budget referendum?
Um, no, I didn't.
Oh, okay, yes.
Actually, no, the ones I mentioned, the only ones I wanted to talk about.
Okay, cool. Lynn, did you have any items to present or go over, as far as suggestions?
Uh, no, I, the polling places was something I had looked into, and so, I've spoken to Irene, and she had good information, and so.
Yeah. Yeah, all right, you know, with that being said, I'm gonna reopen it up for public comment, you know, just to make sure that, you know, everybody's had an opportunity to, you know, present or suggest anything, if anybody has-
Can we discuss the rest of them?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I believe we-
Kevin's proposed?
Went over them on the first meeting.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, we did.
Okay, just missed it.
Yeah, because I think you were in planning zoning.
All right, that was back and forth.
Yeah, you were doing double duty that day.
And what was the discussion on two seven F?
Two seven F.
The petitioning for a budget referendum.
Let me jog my foot here. Oh, that had to do with a petition for a referendum, two seven F.
For budgets.
Yeah. So, section, current section, app says, "Section two seven does not apply to the budget process in section two dash four." And just so we have a record here, two dash four, basically has to do with, you know-
Petitioning for referendum.
Yeah. One thing I can say, because I was there, is this was decided in court. That's one thing I can say, because I was there, you know, the court made a decision, and that-
Oh, that it did not apply to the budget.
Right.
So if we took it out of the Charter, then it could apply to the budget.
Then it very well could, I would feel-
That's a question right there.
Right, so how does the commission feel about deleting two dash seven F? Trev?
I have no problem with it, I guess we're gonna save a little toner.
All right, Virginia?
Because are we writing laws or are we law?
Right.
So what does it mean then?
Uh, two dash seven F, currently in its permutation, which the Superior Court even decided it worked this way anyway, was that you couldn't convert a town meeting on the budget to a referendum where the polls were open from twelve to eight.
There's a lot of tie-ins to that, because we talked earlier about the percentages of voters coming out to the polls, so that ties into, if you wanted to keep it here, that's fine, but there's also the tie-in of the fifteen, twenty percent, whatever you want to move it to. So there's a lot of things in play there. If you wanted just to keep it out altogether-
Can we vote on that, or do you-
Oh, no, no, of course, I mean, we don't need to decide this today, I mean, obviously, yeah.
This one in particular says, no matter what.
Yes, it says-
If you don't get the twenty-five percent, you have to go to the town meeting. As it stands right now, on current charter, if you don't get the twenty-five percent voters out to the polls on the first budget referendum, and one of them fails, you then have to go to the town meeting.
Then you have all subsequent ballots.
Versus if you took this line out, you would still have an opportunity for someone to come to petition, to go back to the polls. So it's up to you, and two areas, there would be, percentage of people going to the polls, or, and/or hitting this out.
Yeah, I mean, one thing that at least comes to my mind is, there's a signature threshold requirement, you need the equivalent of five percent of the total electors in the town registered to vote. And there is kind of an analogy to the primary process during elections, because as we all know, you go to your party's convention, if you don't get enough delegates, you have to go out, collect signatures, be placed on the ballot. And the way that works is, it's really, it's deliberately made difficult to overrule what the party had done, and that's why the threshold's so high. And I would think the rationale there would be, they made it so high, so whatever the will of the body, you know, couldn't just be easily overturned or overruled. So, I'm just throwing this out here, alternatively, if we delete section F, maybe a compromise would be, the number of signatures would be higher. You know, because the inverse concern is basically that, running a poll, you know, right, keeping the polls open, you gotta get poll workers, it costs money, you gotta get people there, you know, do we want to go through that hassle and expense, because five percent of the people want the polls to be open? I mean, regardless of the philosophy on that, I mean, I think we would have to dig into this in the future, but, you know, consider maybe that trade-off.
So you're saying more signatures means more people are interested in having this vote?
Right, I mean, like, because obviously, if you had ten people have to sign this thing, then we're gonna be doing referendum on everything, you know, because it's easy to find ten people. Yes, Chuck?
Perhaps something that could be considered instead is, you have twenty-five percent turnout to the polls, in order to have to go back to the poll again, maybe you lower that number down a little bit, so that you have a chance again, as a compromise.
It could be, it very well could be.
That would be section two four, right?
Um, actually, we are talking about two seven, and the mechanism that we're discussing is the number of signatures.
Well, I was talking about voter turnout for the initial-
In two four, the percent, the twenty-five percent.
I see what you're saying now. Two four B.
Was it last year, we turned down the budget and vote, and then we had a little town meeting with less than, well, less than went out to vote and passed the budget?
Close to.
Yes, yeah, yeah, sure.
Sure.
So is the more appropriate response to reduce it to twenty, from twenty-five to twenty percent?
It very well may be, that is another potential trade-off, and perhaps that could be the barometer for whether, you know, I think a lot of-
It's so low, though.
Yeah.
You can't fight voter apathy, no matter how many votes-
Yes, you can.
Well, you know, it's interesting, you can, but it seems the harder you fight it, and the more loud you fight it, the more it increases.
I don't want this thing to happen.
I think we're gonna educate people, you know? They don't want to do something, I see that.
Right.
Yeah, I see that too.
All right, so with that said, and I know we got a lot of these suggestions down at the last meeting, is there any further comments or suggestions?
Yeah.
Yes.
I remember the spending going by, I keep hearing between, like, twelve and eight, is there a way we can do it from doing six AM and eight? Because basically, disenfranchise between twelve and eight, all second shift people.
Cut down the polling.
Okay, so that leads into the, that leads into the question is, if that is the case, do we tie these two like a chain link? One has to pass, and one for the other to be passed, so if we want to do six AM to eight PM, but in order to do that, we must have a dual, at maximum, voting places, so from four to two.
Just for the referendum, I could just have one polling place.
You could, but still, but still tied, six AM to-
Six AM.
Six AM to eight PM, yeah.
I think it's a disincentive.
Sure, perhaps, perhaps we can find out what it costs to hold a referendum?
How much?
At each polling place?
It's gonna, right now, it's gonna cost what it's, what it's, it would cost what it costs for regular elections. Seven thousand, seven thousand dollars, it's a salary, with four polling places.
Seven thousand, that's a salary, do you send out the machines, or is it different?
No, that, we usually eventually use paper ballots.
Paper ballots, so that's a little cheaper there.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the main reason it's a lot more right now.
We probably don't get a thousand people to come out and vote in a referendum, and we gotta chase all over town.
That's something I need to hear.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so let me repeat that, in a budget referendum, we sometimes don't get a thousand people, voters.
Yeah.
Which is sad.
Right.
You know, and we're staffing four, you know, four to five, let's call it five polling places for this year, and then three other locations. We do paper ballots, so we're not spending money on ballots, we're not spending money on the machines, or the memory cards and that, so we do save there. But we still have to pay the salaries of the workers, we do cut down our workers sometimes, because we can, because it's not dictated by the state of Connecticut, it's dictated by the local government, and we've always, you know, it's with the least amount of people that we can.
Well, that makes sense.
But we could, you know, if you wanted to open from six AM to eight PM, and you did it here at the town hall, I don't, I mean, I can't talk for my counterpart, but I can say that I'm sure-
Yeah, I mean, a reasonably inferior counterpart would probably agree.
I'm sure, I'm sure Sonny probably would.
Mark?
So as far as this percentage, twenty-five percent, she's saying we're not even, like, ten percent, a little over ten percent, we're getting?
Yeah, just about.
Those are registered, ten thousand registered voters, give or take, the population of, what, fifteen thousand?
Yeah, we're about, we're about nine thousand registered voters now.
So we can-
So just getting over ten percent.
And in the populace entirely, we're in the six, seven percent.
What I'm saying, moving it to twenty percent's not gonna do any good either.
But see, but the frustration part that I, is with a lot of people, when they show up at the polling places before twelve, and they-
Exactly, we're disenfranchising those people.
We're disenfranchising these people, though we tell them they can go and do absentee ballots, but that's those that are coming here. If they're going to Central Village, or Regent, or Wusup, we're not catching them. So if they're showing up in those polling locations before noon time, thinking that they can vote, there's nobody there to tell them.
I reiterate, six AM to eight PM.
If you did that, and went to two polling places, you'd be better off.
Or if we did that, went to one.
If you want to do that.
These are just thoughts, I mean, I don't want to hurt anybody in the town, I don't, and neither does Sonny, neither one of us want to hurt anybody. We're just thinking of the financial things.
Efficiency, I mean-
More efficient way to do things.
You know, people want lower taxes, they want more efficient, that means they want more efficient government by definition.
You know, if you're telling, if the people on Facebook, and the people who are talking out there, who are saying, there's gotta be a better way, they can save money, well, you can, we can save money, but you don't, do you want us to save money? You have to make that decision, you know?
And I would love to see more of those people on Facebook here, you know?
Yeah.
Actually saying, you know, I like your, do I, I'll take the chance, anything, anything to get all, the greatest number of possible good ideas we can, you gotta cast a wide net, even in Stillwater, but, you know, hey. So, with that, is there any additional input, other than what we already have?
I just have one more to ask.
Excellent.
Because I wasn't here, chapter four, changing the boards to odd number, odd member numbers? In less than six years?
Right, and actually-
How many odd numbers?
The odd numbers part, we kind of agreed, because you got even, it's like you got a potential for like a deadlock. However, I did reach out to Ken DePietro, just to kind of ask for his two cents on that, and he was actually of the opinion, I mean, there are two schools of thought on this, one school of thought is, the terms are too long, like six years, you know, that's, some people have multiple marriages, houses, and cars in six years, and life moves very quickly. On the other hand, you know, Ken had some very valid points, you know, where it helps with continuity, you know, because you've got, just like people, they get up to speed, and they get really good at it, you know, over time. So, I mean, it's, those are basically the two competing schools of thought, but I think universally, the sense is, I can't speak for everybody, but an odd number on board makes sense, because you don't want to tie vote, it's just outlawed, you know?
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
These boards that have six-year terms? I think it's planning zoning, Board of Ed, and-
Finance.
Finance, could, for your next meeting, have the chairs of those boards?
Uh, yes, actually-
So that you could discuss it with them?
You know, I think we've all encouraged, you know, people to come out and share their thoughts.
Actually give them a call, say we'd like you to come?
Yeah.
Can I say something?
Sure.
As a member of the zoning board, it takes a lot to get up to speed with the zoning regulations, one meeting a month. Six years is about what it's probably gonna take to get up to speed, because there's a lot, a lot to learn out there, a lot to know.
You know, it's a very good point, because I remember there was one meeting we had very recently, and I was just trying to be helpful, and the issue had to do with sound, because you know how the sound issue comes up? Some people are like, you know, oh, this is loud, and I'm like, my former lab tech self goes, how loud, how do you know? I mean, how do you calibrate that instrument? You know, so, I mean, I would imagine zoning, I mean, you guys are interfacing with, you know, wetlands issues on one thing, you're dealing with, I mean, it's a limited extent.
Engineers.
Engineers, surveying, you know? I mean, so, it's, you touch on a lot of things, it would take.
It's a lot.
Yeah.
I agree, six years is a long time, but I think it truly takes that long to get comfortable. You're not feeling really comfortable sitting up there in front of people to laugh at your second or third year on the board, and you're not really ready to start talking, some of it's a little bit more bashful and shy, is not right, it's not till you're in that fourth or fifth year, that you're really starting to come out of yourselves and help, you know, try to help them be more productive. And then if you did, if you did a four-year term, you'd be changing half the board every, of the election cycle. This way, you're, with six-year terms, you're only changing a third of the board, so you still have that continuity, like, just what DePietro was talking about.
Yeah, because-
You don't want a bunch of brand-new newbies up there, because it's gonna be all, you're gonna be like deer in headlights, it's-
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
And new ones don't say much.
No, I served on the Board of Education too, and that was a lot of ketchup, let me tell you, to try to get up to all speed with that.
Kevin?
Can you get some data behind this, though, can you actually look and see how many people were elected to a six-year term, actually stayed to hold six?
Yes.
Because that would be helpful to understand that as well, because, while we say that, and I agree, it takes a few years for you to get up to speed, and I would say, when I was on the Board of Ed, it was, first year, you're not saying a word. Second year, you might interject here and there, and the third year, you start opening up, by the fourth year, you're actually being a very active member of the board. The question is, if you're, like Mr. DePietro was saying, if you're a good member, he doesn't want to lose you, because you're a good member.
Right, and you was valuable.
What you value, you have shown your value to the community at that point, and whether you're four or five, is-
whether you're four or five, you should be able to be reelected. Exactly.
Exactly, that, you're valuable, we need to get reelected, that's how, yes.
But if you're not reelected, you're lost.
I'd like to look at the percentage of people that actually stayed for forty-six, because it makes it, gives you more, more.
The selectmen get two years.
Yeah, well, that's another.
That's another question.
Because they have to prove themselves.
Right, I'm showing you in your.
My, my, my thought is perhaps another thing to think about instead of the six-year term, maybe you should look into a performance-type thing, if the person isn't showing up to their meetings on a regular basis, maybe we've gotta come up with a mechanism to try to correct that.
Yeah, selected positions.
There's a state statute, so you can't, you can't.
Yeah, selected positions.
You can't do that on appointed boards and commissions, there's a percentage of meetings you're supposed to go to, but unelected because of that state statute, you can't.
Right.
So can I ask you a question? If, um, they don't show up after three years and they're reappointed, what's the difference than having, instead of everybody there for a four-year term?
My, my opinion on this is pretty easy, each chair of a board committee that has someone that hasn't been showing up for a couple of years, should be contacting that person and saying, are you or are you not interested in helping and promoting the town that I feel? If you are not, please ask yourself if you would consider putting in your resignation, so we can get people on here that do, that is really, in my opinion, is up to the chair.
Right, but I'm just saying, changing the six-year term to four-year terms isn't gonna change that.
No.
You still have that.
Doesn't matter what number of years you put it at, you are correct.
Right.
It really is that.
And I agree with you.
Yeah.
They should be asked to resign.
Hey, you, you should be actually doing like, if I gave you the analogy that you were talking about before, with, you're looking to say, what, uh, can you evaluate each person? If the person isn't showing up in the first year, you already know it's time for you to move on, and it should be the chairperson saying, look, I keep track, you've missed six out of, out of seven meetings so far, maybe when you got elected, you really didn't realize how hard this was, would you consider stepping back, because we have somebody else who's interested?
Yeah. Right, 'cause I, I know the alternative school of thought, and, and I'm, you know, the jury's out in my mind, as to my own opinion on this, um, but I, I did talk with Tom Stinkwitz briefly on it, he's more of the opinion that it should be four years, because of the reasons that I enumerated in the first place, so I'm almost wondering, I'm throwing this out here, we may decide to tackle it with, you know, just, instead of like, making a unilateral thing, where we consider dropping all the six-year terms down to four, maybe consider it on a board-by-board basis, because I know finance, Board of Finance is a different animal, um, you know, planning and zoning's a different animal, Board of Ed's a different animal.
They, they all have their, no matter what board it is, they're all complicated. Board of Finance has a lot to come upon, to learn about, Board of Ed has a ton to learn about, planning and zoning has a bunch, so really, to say, wow, this one's not as important, we'll, we'll change it, you can't really do that, you gotta remember that, each one just deals with something a little bit differently, and it's all extremely complicated.
However, uh, to play devil's advocate, I, I would point out that the, um, you know, planning and zoning, you have a zoning enforcement officer with background, with expertise to, to help guide, and on the Board of Ed, you have a superintendent, his job is, or her job, as the case may be, is to, you know, read up, are we complying with the statutes? What do we need to do, so they have that background. Board of Finan, Finance, I mean, you have, you know, a finance director, but.
As Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's, that's kinda shared.
And ultimately, who does the Board of, the, the finance director, who does she work for technically? I mean, technically, she's worked for the Selectmen, but is, is she working for the Finance Board, Board of Finance?
Day-to-day operations to the Selectmen, and then, uh, for oversight for finances to the, uh, Board of Finance.
And then planning and zoning, day-to-day operations, Selectmen, with oversight to the Planning and Zoning Board.
Right.
So basically, these people are in charge of that person, to an extent, very limited, I mean.
Right, right, I mean, but the, the reason I was considering was not necessarily who's in charge, but, you know, what kind of expertise they need to have, and in turn, how that expertise will, you know, inform the board, or whatever the board may be, like, here's what we need to do, and here's why we need to do it. So it kinda would seem that Board of Finance isn't necessarily in that specialized category. I guess, I, I'm kinda curious, I just, Kevin, what would your, um, input be on this as far as like, like, what kind of expertise, in a perfect world, would you require a finance, uh, you know, director to have?
Well, uh, the college degree for a finance director.
Yes.
Okay, so we're looking for the college degree in, in that field.
Yeah.
We're looking for, if, if a perfect world would be someone who has some experience in, uh, that position in, in, in the town, because municipal is different than, than a lot of the business world, so those would be two of the things.
Right.
In this particular case, it's good that this, this, our current one has somebody, uh, some background also with the, uh, education, because, believe it or not, they also do a lot of the finance work for the Board of Education by statute, they're supposed to be able to file certain reports, so they have to know educational, uh, responsibilities as well, so that's, that's some of the things you would look for, for, uh, backgrounds.
Right, I mean, so, so it wouldn't be like, they wouldn't be going to the Board of Education, because the superintendent already does that, and he says, we need to do A, B, C, and D to be in compliance, and take the, the parallel example of, say, planning and zoning, your zoning enforcement officer goes, okay, well, you know, the building code says this, or, you know, and so this is why we have to do it. So it, it would seem that concern wouldn't be nearly operative, at least in my mind, for Board Finance, so I think this particular question on the length of terms probably should be tackled on a board-by-board basis rather than globally. Trev?
I'm an extreme purveyor of limitations in government, because then you have this problem, like we have in the federal government, the Senate, lifelong people who have no real skin in the game, they have no real, they, no, I think, don't give any preference, no matter how much we want to, four years across the board, make it simple, because what if the people who are now given six years? What about eight years? You know, it's true, they give no limitations, you're in there, you're for life, you're like a judge.
Well, but there are limitations.
There are, but here's the point, is it unfair to give certain boards more or less? And so if you just say, across the board, every year's four, every board's four years, and yes, you're probably Goshdarn right, that, you know, it takes people time to get up to speed, but if they're good, they realize that they're involved, that's what a reelection is for, that's what they are going to be reelected for, is to, you know, okay, great guess, really good input in year three, well, let's put you in for year four, five, six, seven, or eight, uh, but there comes a point to where, you know, it, it isn't truly unfair to require Board of Finance, now, okay, then we got Board of Ed, now they're linking together, then what about zoning and planning? Next year, I got well in my river, because I can't, you know, somebody was unqualified, because they put out the concentrations on another board. Simplify, cross the board, four years, done, and it makes it easy, makes it understandable, and if you're good, you're reelected, if not, well then, you know, okay, see you next round.
That's good, but six years.
Art? Like I said before, I, I like her point, you know, six years may be good for these boards, we don't know, explore that, but, like I said, I think you should get the chairs, get their input next meeting, because.
Yeah.
They're, they're gonna know better what they need on their board.
Conversation, the question to me really comes down to, if you're gonna keep it for six years, that's fine, but I think that the bylaws for each of those committees should include something where the chairperson has a little bit more, um, input into contacting each of the, uh, individuals on their board, to say, look, you gotta show up.
Pretend it's your.
And so the bylaws are written, and, and it tells you that, hey, I better be there or else.
Right, and, and they, and they do their own bylaws, so.
So that, that's, without this charter, they can do their own bylaws, and they can put that in there, so it, it's not gonna change for numbers of years, you know, for the years of term length, then at least the bylaws could help to put some teeth behind making sure people show up.
Yeah, so, I mean, it may very well be the, the fix to the problem of lengthy terms and people who don't continue to show up, may very well be giving them a lot more leeway in determining their own bylaws, that very well may be the fix. Uh, is there any additional, uh, comment, suggestions on proposed changes to the charter that we, we should take up?
It's time.
This, this is, we, we are, we are definitely getting a good inventory here, so, Kevin?
I know you're about to adjourn, so I wanted to interject this for one second, as a reminder, you have been given the copy of the suggested and voted on revision commission meeting dates. For the public, make sure that they are aware that the next meeting is a special commission meeting to discuss the Board of Selectmen recommendations, comments from public hearing, and begin preparing a draft report at six thirty on March eleventh.
Yep. So, yeah, with that.
Motion to adjourn?
Oh, you make a motion to adjourn, is there a second? Wow, all right, any need for discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, no opposed, we are adjourned.